We would like to welcome everyone to the March 23 meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. At this time, the prayer tonight will be given by Alderman January Kenzie.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to the Board of Alderman. Ms. Barbara Sampson, would you come to the podium and lead us in prayer, please?
Good evening. Will everybody please lift their eyes towards heaven and open their hearts from which come our strength? Lord bless this board tonight. Lord, please let them make sound decisions, Lord. Let them have love in their hearts for everyone. Lord, let them know that you are God. Lord, please let them know that black lives matter, Asian lives matter. With you, God, all lives matter. Lord, please let them make decisions that sound and let them respect every community, Lord. And, Lord, please press on their heart to make sure that they know that the world is surrounded by love, Lord, not hate. And, Lord, please let them listen to all the communities that's affected by any decision that they make, Lord. Lord, please let it be in their heart to make a sound decision about standing white, Lord. Lord, please touch their heart, show them, let them show love, Lord. Let every decision they make come from you, God, not my will, not their will, that your will be done. In Jesus' name, peace be unto you, I pray. Amen.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, God. Mayor Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Harris. Alderman Asper. Mayor Apple.
Here.
Alderman Kenzie.
Here.
Alderman Bennett.
Present.
Alderman Oden.
Here.
Our first item of business tonight will be the consent agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion to read the document.
Have a motion and second is their discussion. See and none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five, Mr. Stevens.
Item number five tonight is the introduction and penning of our new Chief of Police. I'm sure as many of you have been anticipating, tonight is the night. He officially began work yesterday at his new office here in New Bern, and we're happy to, very happy to have him here. Patrick Gallagher comes to us from Virginia Beach, Virginia. He has a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice, a Master's Degree in Public Administration, and is a graduate of the FBI National Academy, the Police Executive Leadership Institute, and the Senior Management Institute for Police. His career in law enforcement exceeds thirty years. First started in the United States Army Military Police Corps in 1983, followed by more than twenty years with the Virginia Beach Police Department, where he began, began work there as a patrol officer, worked his way up to the position of Deputy Chief. So at this point, I'm going to ask Chief Gallagher to come up. We have officially already sworn him in effective Saturday because he was so anxious to get to work. We came in Saturday morning, and we actually sworn, swore him in then, because Chief Summers' last day was on Friday, so we had to, we had to wait until Saturday to do that, but he was very anxious to get started. So tonight, we're just going to do a ceremonial penning, which is the penning of his badge as the Chief of Police here in New Bern. And so first, before we do that, and I think Millicent, his wife, is here with us along with some other family members, which I will let Patrick introduce before we get started with the penning, I want to read real quickly what the penning of the badge means. While this act is not required by law, it is symbolic. The badge is a recognizable symbol of sacrifice duty and service. It is a public display of a police officer's acceptance of the responsibility that comes with that authority. A badge pinned close to the heart is to be held most sacred. It is a visible sign that the wearer is a person of integrity, character, and courage, as well as an example of the commitment to the sworn oath the officer has taken to preserve and protect that you took on Saturday. Changes are all around us, but some traditions are so important that they must remain, and the manner in which this badge is awarded and earned should never change. It is a long and difficult vetting process to earn the right to wear, and it is based solely on individual performance. The website Wikipedia defines badge as "a device or accoutrement, often containing the insignia of an organization which is presented or displayed to indicate some feat of service, a special accomplishment, a symbol of authority granted by taking an oath, a sign of legitimate employee or student status, or as a simple means of identification." We see this used throughout American law enforcement history, especially in days of old. Every town had a marshal or a sheriff known not by uniform or special clothing, but by the war, the badge that they wore. Oftentimes, you watch the old Westerns, all they saw, everybody's dressed the same, but they all wore a badge, and that's how you could indicate the difference. The sign of this badge represented law and order. I know you feel great pride and honor and a sense of accomplishment, as well as the responsibility that has been bestowed upon you with this seemingly simple act of penning on this badge. There are three possible times a badge is presented to an officer. First, upon graduating academy. Second, upon being promoted, like today. And third, is at the retirement of an officer whenever they leave the field of policing. All of which of these are very exciting times. It is a way of honoring those who have served and continue to serve. The most recognized method of badge penning is to have a family member pin the badge on the uniform, for it will be these people that will be the most important people in your life, and that will be there to support you. Our families are very important to all that we do. They will be there for us through ups and downs, and long after your uniform is retired, it is your family that will be by your side, and I would hope, Chief Gallagher, Chief Gallagher, that you will consider, and I'm going to speak on behalf of the Board, the Board, myself, and our department heads, and our community as a whole, is your family as well, as you begin your journey here with the City of New Bern. So at this point, I think they want to do it up here, so if you'll come up here, Millicent, if you'll come up, we'll allow you to do the penning. And then whenever we're completed with the penning, Chief Gallagher, if you want to come down and say a few words and introduce the folks you brought with you to the event tonight. All right. I'd like to introduce to you all our new Chief of Police for the City of New Bern, Chief Patrick Gallagher.
So I want to thank everybody for being here today, specifically my friends and family that have traveled some distance to be here to share this with me and my wife Millicent. First and foremost are my two wonderful children. I'll start with my youngest, my pride and joy, my daughter Paige Catherine Gallagher, who will be married soon, and we welcome another member into our family. Secondly, my eldest son, and I will repeat myself, our pride and joy, Gunther Mark Gallagher, who by the way, when he chose a college to attend, chose UNC Charlotte. I'll never forget when he told me, Dad, I want to go to UNC. And I told him, Son, as far as I can tell, that's not in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And he said, Dad, I want to go to UNC. So I said Chapel Hill? He said, No, Charlotte. I said, Son, I know where UNC is. He said, Dad, there's a lot of UNC universities in North Carolina, so I learned a great deal. He spent five years in Charlotte. It's a wonderful city, so we're very proud of him. He's an architect now working in Norfolk, Virginia. And three other people I would like to introduce today. The city manager mentioned that I started my law enforcement career in the early 1980s in the United States Army Military Police Corps. I do realize I am in Marine Corps country. I spent thirty years in Navy country, but one of my closest friends that I met in the military, and we've stayed close friends to this day, is Michael Cockman, who's sitting right over here. He is retired Assistant Chief from Rockingham, North Carolina Police Department. And two other very close friends of mine, Moira in Tanawright, that are actually residents of the great state of North Carolina, and Moyac, and they traveled here today. I am incredibly proud to join this phenomenal police department. My command staff that is here today have been incredibly generous in welcoming me into this organization, helping me assimilate myself into the culture of the New Bern Police Department. There are so many things to be proud of with respect to the New Bern Police Department that I am humbled by the confidence given to me by the city manager, and I endeavor to make each citizen of this community part of my life. I endeavor to do the finest job I can to engage in community outreach and community policing efforts, as Chief Summers has made a legacy of this police department. I wish he was here. If it wasn't for his travels, I know he would be here. He has supported me, he has helped me, he has mentored me, and he told me that he would always pick up my phone call if I called him, and that speaks volumes of his character and his love for this, for this community and this police department. With that, I thank you once again, and I look forward to working with you in the upcoming years.
Chief, it was good to meet you today, and again, to be at the ceremony on Saturday, and we look forward to your leadership here in New Bern. Okay, let's go to item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Board, item number six is a presentation by Davenport and Company LLC on future financing options. Ms. Hogan has asked Ted Cole, Senior Vice President and Co-Head of Public Finance for Davenport and Company LLC, to come to us tonight. He's going to discuss some financing options that the city can look at for the future. Options include general obligation bonds, we've talked about those before, which generally involve the public's vote, revenue bonds, special obligation bonds, limited obligation bonds, installment purchase agreements, certificates of participation, all of which will be explained by Mr. Cole. He does have a PowerPoint presentation, I think preliminarily, we sent all of you an executive summary that will pretty much cover most of what he's going to talk about, but at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cole for his presentation.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Again, I'm Ted Cole with Davenport. It's a pleasure to be here, and hopefully all of you have a hard copy of this in front of you. Two books, one, the thinner book is the executive summary, there's a thicker book with all the detail, if you care to get into that tonight or at another time, and I would ask, try to keep it as conversational as possible. If you have questions, please stop me, I'll be, you wouldn't have to go through it. There we go. Thank you. And just a very brief little bit of background, we work with local-
Local governments across North Carolina in a financial advisory capacity, and so what that means in a nutshell is work with local governments on capital planning, capital funding, oftentimes requiring some sort of a debt issuance, and helping them plan for and navigate through that process. There are page numbers in the lower right-hand corner of the book, and I'll start here on page one, little bit of an overview of the municipal finance market, and I think you've gotten some of this recently from the Finance Director, but, so I'll go through this and maybe go through it a little bit more quickly. Just wanted to give you a very high-level overview of some of the primary concepts associated with debt financing for local governments in North Carolina. There are essentially four primary types of debt that you could issue as a city. General obligation bonds, which require a vote of the people, of the citizens, a referendum, a citywide referendum, and if that were to pass, for whatever the project or projects might be, that would allow you to issue general obligation bonds, which would be secured by the full faith and credit of the city, meaning your taxing authority. It is, in essence, the, the best credit that any local government can offer to a lender or an investor. Secondly, what we call installment purchase contracts, but they also go by some other names, limited obligation bonds or certificates of participation. They are all the same in the essence of, they don't require a referendum or a vote, they do require a public hearing to issue and a couple of resolutions, but they are secured by some asset. So rather than being secured by your taxing authority, like a GO would be, they're secured by an asset. So it might be a building that you're building or improving, it might be a water plant, a sewer plant, a library, a fire station. It's essentially a loan or a bond that is secured by a mortgage on some facility, and it's very commonly used in North Carolina. You all have used them when you do vehicle financings or small building projects, that's oftentimes the, the type of debt that's issued. Third is a revenue bond. Oftentimes, that's associated with a utility system of some sort, an enterprise system, so water, sewer, electric, broadband, things of that nature are examples of projects that might be used, where you might use revenue bonds. And, and the primary distinction there is, rather than your taxing authority, right? We're not talking about your taxing authority there, we're not talking about putting a mortgage on a facility, rather, we're talking about pledging to a lender or an investor, we're pledging the, the net revenues of that system. So the water system, the sewer system, the electric system. What the lender has is a lien on revenues that are generated from the system that is issuing those bonds. So it's oftentimes, I think in y'all's case, would be applicable for water, sewer, or electric. And then finally, special obligation bonds, particularly useful to cities. It is, it is a type of debt that is secured by a non-tax revenue of the city. So a good example of that might be a sales tax that the county levies, right? The city doesn't necessarily levy the sales tax. The county levies the sales tax, and the city is given a distribution of that sales tax revenue. So a special obligation bond would be where you could put a lien on a revenue like that, or a franchise fee, or some other non-taxed revenue. And again, in the case of sales tax, it is a tax, but it's not a tax of the city, it would be a tax of the county in this example. And so those, those are a type of debt that can be used to help fund projects that maybe don't have a good piece of collateral associated with them. It's not a building, it's not a tangible asset, and maybe it doesn't, the project doesn't have a reliable source of revenue like a water, sewer, or electric system. Special obligation bonds are used a little less frequently in North Carolina, but they are an option, and they're particularly helpful, as I said, in projects where you don't have an asset to pledge or known quantifiable revenues that you might pledge for a revenue bond. So those are your four basic types of debt. When it comes down to how do we issue that debt, to whom do we issue the debt, we, we talk about it in three basic concepts. One is a direct bank loan, where we go out and we solicit proposals from a bank for lending. It might be a ten-year loan, might be a fifteen-year loan, or a twenty-year loan, whatever the case may be. And it could be a GO, a general obligation, it could be an installment, it could be a revenue bond, it could be a special obligation bond. So any of those four types of debt could be placed with a bank. We would normally do a competitive solicitation, an RFP-type process, to say, here's what we're looking to do, this is the type of debt we're looking to issue, the amount, the term, and we ask banks to provide proposals. Another option, rather than going to a single lender like a bank, is to issue bonds in the public bond market, and that happens every day, happens across the country, it happens weekly, multiple times a week in North Carolina. And so essentially, it could, it could be a means to issue any of those types of debt that I talked about, it's just going from a single bank lender to a broader pool of investors that might look to buy those bonds. It's oftentimes a more viable funding approach for larger projects, or projects that you want to amortize or pay back over a longer period of time. Oftentimes, banks are somewhat limited in the term of their debt, ten or fifteen years, maybe twenty years. The bond market can offer, and regularly does, access to longer-term fixed rates. And then finally, state and federal programs. So that could be things like state revolving fund money for utilities, it could be things like USDA rural development for any number of projects. So that's what we mean by different state and federal programs. Again, you could, you could go through those programs and issue a GO bond, a revenue bond, an installment. So there, there are distinct types of debt to issue, and there are distinct ways by which you can issue each of those types of debt. Generally speaking, along with whatever local approvals are needed by you all, right? As I said, a GO, you have to have a vote, but from there, you have to have some resolutions that are done by the, the city board for installments, you have to have a public hearing, you have to adopt resolutions, there are local approval requirements that are necessary. But beyond that, you have the Local Government Commission in Raleigh that oversees generally all types of bond issue. There are some exceptions for smaller loans, or loans that are only secured by vehicles, but by and large, the Local Government Commission is approving most every piece of debt that a local government in North Carolina is issuing. The Local Government Commission meets once a month, and they have an agenda of various numbers of debt issuances that have been brought to them for approval. And there's, and you know, we, we kind of work through that process with what we call the LGC, leading up to the actual bond issue. And they're looking at things like, is, is this bond issue, or this debt issuance, whatever you want to call it, necessary and expedient? Is it timely? Do you need to do this now for a project? Secondly, are you borrowing enough money for your project, but not too much? They don't like local governments borrowing on speculation. So oftentimes, what you'll find, when you go to them for approval of debt, you need to have projects that are fully bid and permitted, so that they know when you're borrowing a certain amount of money, there, it's enough money for the project, it's not too much and not too little, and the way they get comfortable is to say, you've got a bid for the project here, and you're borrowing over here, and those amounts match. They're looking and, and, and have put more emphasis in recent years on the debt management and, and financial performance of the local government. So they are paying very close attention to how your audits are looking every year. When are the audits being completed and submitted? Are there findings that are, that occur in the audit that are repetitive in particular? And they will take the opportunity, if you're going to them for debt issuance, to, to inquire and look for answers and remedies to other fiscal trends that they might have a concern about. If there is a tax, tax increase required to support a debt, they, they'd like to know that, they want to know that it's not excessive, that it's affordable, that, you know, they're, it's deemed to be at, an appropriate level of, of additional tax burden to support the project, and that the, the debt can be marketed, that you have a market-based interest rate that you, you can secure, whether it's from a bank or the bond market. Okay? Any questions on that? All right, next page, we wanted to take just a quick moment, this is page two, to talk about general fund balance overview. One, it's obviously important in its own right. Secondly, it's important, when I go back to that discussion about the Local Government Commission and debt issuance, and them making sure that sort of the financial house is in order. What we've got here is six years of audited financials for the general fund, fiscal years fifteen through twenty. I'm looking at the table, and we're just restating for you all your general fund revenues and expenditures on lines two and three, that is where the revenues and expenditures ended up in the audited fiscal year. Lines five through thirteen show you your fund balance detail. You can tie this back to your audits. Fund balance in total is on line thirteen, so that's all of the dollars in an aggregate, but we know from accounting standards and, and accounting procedures, there are different types of fund balance, and they have to be identified and reported in certain ways. So that's why you have lines six through twelve. These are the different types of fund balance that roll up to the total, and dollars fall into one of those categories or another according to accounting practices. The, the fund balance component that is most often looked at is line twelve. That's that unassigned fund balance. That is the pot of money that you all, as an elected body, have the most discretion over. It's the pot of money with the least amount of restrictions on it, and it's oftentimes the proxy that the LGC, that lenders, that the rating agencies, those different types of entities that might be involved in looking at a, a city debt issuance, look to for financial stability and strength. And you can see on line twelve, over the years, how that unassigned fund balance has evolved. And of note, in fiscal year nineteen and twenty, that unassigned fund balance did take a step down, and somewhat of a significant step down, particularly in fiscal year nineteen. And working through this with staff, and I believe you've been briefed on this periodically or fairly recently, sort of dug into that a little bit and had those discussions, and that's why we've included line fifteen, which is an adjusted unassigned fund balance that takes into account due-tos from FEMA related to expenses that you all have incurred, that you have paid for, related to natural disasters and events where you've had to, you know, do cleanup and do other responses to, to those events. And, and those dollars are coming back to you, coming back to the city as you kind of work through that FEMA reimbursement process, which I know takes time. But we have worked with staff to determine, given the amount of money that you have fronted for those events, and when that money comes back, how it will flow through your financials, you'll see that in fiscal year nineteen and twenty, that unassigned fund balance is back up to a level that's much more consistent with prior years. So on paper, as you look at this, that unassigned fund balance has taken a significant step down in nineteen, got, got recovered a little bit in twenty, but even though, even so, in twenty, it's below that historical level. That's the green bar. It's the percent of those dollars as a percent of your budget. But when you take into account the fund balance, excuse me, the FEMA due-tos, it is a much more, that's the dotted line, it's a much more consistent picture. And I think, one, that for the Local Government Commission and for lenders, when and if the time comes to talk to lenders, is, is very understandable and explainable. So I wanted to touch on that. Any questions there? All right, so back to the debt discussion. We, we look at debt in two primary buckets, and this, this page is talking about your tax-supported debt. So it's essentially all the debt you have outstanding that is not associated with utilities, essentially. And you will see that, you'll see it graphically in the upper left, we look at everything on a fiscal year basis, and we're starting this with fiscal year twenty-two, which is the year you're about to go into. We're about to finish fiscal twenty-one, you're going into fiscal twenty-two, and your principal and interest payments, you can see it in the graph, or you can see it on the table in the right, is about one point five, excuse me, no. Let me get the number for, yeah, about one, about one point five million dollars, when we exclude your short-term vehicle debt. You have some short-term vehicle debt that will roll off. The thought process that we've had in working with staff is that it's very likely that you could take on additional short-term vehicle debt. So as one or two of those loans roll off, it's likely that you will backfill with another and another as your fleet and vehicle needs evolve year over year. So what we're looking at in our table on the right is the existing debt without that vehicle debt. And you'll see in fiscal year twenty-two, the payment is, I'm on the right-hand side, column B, about one point five million dollars, and it's stepping down. The next year, it's one-three, the next year, it's nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, and so on. Everything is paid off by fiscal year thirty-six. So what we've done is, we have started to set up a model that says- So what we've done is we have started to set up a model that says, if you can continue budgeting that 1.5 million that is due to your lenders in FY '22, if you can continue to budget that year over year, column D is creating, or it would create, some natural capacity for new projects going forward, whatever they might be. So you can see if you, if you, as your debt steps down, if you're able to continue to appropriate that 1.5 million a year, you look at column D in fiscal '23, there's about 210,000 that could be available to help fund another capital projects, and it steps up to 600,000 the next year, and so on. And so when we now transition to talk about, how much money could we borrow for capital projects? That's one of the key premises we have, is that if you're able to hold that budget constant going forward, even though your current obligations are stepped down, stepping down, you'll have some natural capacity that, that is a result. And I will note, one penny on the city's tax rate today generates approximately $330,000. So that's a point of reference that'll be relevant here in a second. So what we've done in, in working through this with staff, we've created three cases for, for your review. One case, first case, case one says, we are not going to dedicate any additional revenues to the capital program beyond what we're already paying in FY '22, that million five. And what we're going to measure for you is if, if you were to do that, and remember, that, that means, back on the prior page, that column D is what you would have to work with going forward. If you were to do that, and, and, and when we assume that any debt you might issue for projects would be repaid over 15 years at 4%, we're going to show you how much of additional debt that amount of money could leverage. Case two is the same, except we have added into it additional revenue equal to one penny on the tax rate. So we're essentially saying, not only will we hold our budget constant at the million five, but we also want to dedicate the equivalent of one penny of additional revenue, about 330,000, into the model. And what does that equate to in terms of debt affordability or debt capacity? And then finally, what happens if we, if you were to dedicate an additional two pennies, or the equivalent revenue of additional two pennies, again, in this case, roughly 660,000? And we roll all of that up into a summary for you on page five, case one, case two, case three. Case one, we're not dedicating any new revenues. We're just going to hold our debt budget constant into the future, and what you'll see is between fiscal year 22, which is the year you're about to go into, and fiscal year 26, we just did a five-year window, that amount of money would leverage about 6.7 million dollars of debt. And remember, that debt would be a 15-year term at 4%. If we get a better interest rate, it would equate to a little more. If you did 20-year debt, you could do a little more. If you did 10-year debt, you'd do a little less, right? It's all about how much those additional dollars that are freed up in your budget will support. So without any additional revenues dedicated to this capital or this debt model, there's about 6.7 million that could be borrowed over the next five years. Case two, we build on that. We take case one, but we also add the equivalent of one new penny into the, the debt model, or a repurposed penny that you're already levying, however that works out. Essentially, 330,000 a year, and you'll see that equates to about 10 and 1/2 million of debt that could be issued over this five-year period. And then finally, if you were to dedicate an, the equivalent of two additional pennies, the, the total amount to be, that could be issued over the five-year periods, about 14 million. So it just gives you a little bit of an idea of order of magnitude dollars that you all could work with in considering your capital plan, your priorities, your initiatives that might require debt. Not all of them do. You may decide to use cash or pay-as-you-go, as we call it, but if it does require debt, if it's appropriate for debt funding, this gives you a little bit of a, an idea of what you could afford under these different scenarios.
On your case C, you should do like that.
Line six through 10, and kind of tell me where you're getting those numbers, 1.9, 3.7? Where, how are you?
Right.
How are you calculating, or I remember C, case one?
Case one.
1.975 million, and then 3.7.
Sure, okay, yes.
Help me out on how you're, just ballpark how you're getting those figures.
Well, and so let me, let me, let me go back a page, two pages rather. If you remember this slide and you look at pay, uh, column D.
Yes.
Column D is, is what would be, I'll say, quote-unquote, freed up if you continue to budget a million five a year, even though your current debt service is stepping down, right? We know that.
Right.
And what, what evolves from that is column D, and the 210,000 that we're showing in fiscal '23, that will support the 1.9 million dollars of debt that we're showing in fiscal '22 as being able to be paid for. So that, that 200,000 that would result from holding your debt service budget constant could support a million nine worth of borrowing if, if that million nine is a 15-year loan. And then the next year, instead of the 210, I want to keep jumping back and forth, there's about 600,000 available. You see that on, uh, column D?
Okay.
It steps up, right? Because the million five now only needs to cover a million three of actual debt, or excuse me, million five only needs to cover 900,000 of additional debt payments.
You're, you're doing some kind of indexing, or is there some indexing involved here?
Uh, is, there's, there's math behind it that says, look, how much does 200,000 dollars a year cover with a 15-year debt? And it's a million nine. The next year, we're picking up another 400,000. That would support another 3.7 million. So it is just, it is, it's, I suppose it's an index of sort, or it's really just a, a calculation we do that says, how much debt could we issue that would be supported by that stream of revenue in column D?
At 4%.
At 4%, at 15 years.
Right.
If the debt was paid back over 20 years, it would be a little more, because your payment would be lower, and those dollars would go a little further. If the debt were paid back over 10 years, the debt payments would be higher, so we would, we wouldn't be able to afford quite as much.
Which is indicating here is, in case one, 1.97 million, that's a $220,000 payment towards debt. If you do case two, which is the 8.275, you've got the same 210,000 plus another 330,000, which basically is 540,000 that you can apply towards a debt payment. That's 540,000, that's the reason why you could go out and lend 8.275 million dollars. So basically, 3.75 million dollars, or 3.7 million dollars roughly for one cent on our tax rate, 330,000. So it, that, that applies across the board, so 200,000 would be about 60% of 3.7, which equates to be 1.9 million.
And things like, um, two, I don't know that you do this, but like, T-Mobile is 4% right now. Do you, do you look at or help in your type of work with analyzing our, our short-term liquidity and how to get the biggest amount of revenue return on it? And keeping in mind, we have to keep fund balance and those type of things? Because that in itself could produce more money to leverage with us, on a sustainability level?
Uh, we, we certainly look at fund balance, and in that detailed book that you've got, there is, there are a handful of additional slides on fund balance. And I guess if I'm hearing you right, maybe just what you're doing with those reserves, how you invest those reserves?
Well, I mean, you know, certain times of year, from September to January, when taxes are due, we have quite a bit of fund balance.
Very good cash flow, right?
You know, do you take Mary and, 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 Mary, or Mark? And are we, are we taking that money out and getting a higher yield and then putting it back when we need it? Are we doing that? I'm just looking for other ways to get additional revenue, revenue streams for sustainability of any leveraging debt we're taking on.
Um, I mean, if you're talking about trying to, to make money off our investments, I guess, is that what you're kind of indicating? I mean, we, we, we do the cash management program that's offered by the state. It's not really yielding a lot right now, just because the interest rates with the bank are, are not very strong. But whenever we can take advantage of those, we definitely do that.
Yeah.
And that's captured in our budget every year. When we submit y'all as a revenue, you will see a revenue item based on, what is that? Proceeds from, from interest?
Interest earnings, right. And, yeah, as, as you're saying, the, the budget dictates a lot about, you might have higher fund balances and very good cash flow as taxes are coming in, but you turn the corner in the calendar year, and maybe you're into a period of time where there's more money going out than coming in. And there are some good tools in North Carolina about investing those funds, but it's all dictated by state statute, what you can purchase, and you need to make sure that you balance, we want to get a good return on our investment of those funds, but we also need to have that money available when the next payroll comes, or whatever it might be, when tax revenues are, are completed in terms of being collected.
It takes money to make money. So when we've got, as Ted showed in previous slides, when we've got 7 million dollars that's still out there unreimbursed from FEMA, that's 7 million dollars we could have had in the capital management fund that we could be drawing interest off of. So instead, we had to expend that money for the services that we had done, cleanup after hurricanes and stuff. So once we get that back in there, obviously, our, our, our yield will be a little bit better.
Okay? So again, range of, remember, this is on the tax-supported side, so we're not talking about utilities at this point. A range of, of what you might have to work with as you're thinking through capital projects, what you all might want to do, priorities, things of that nature. We're going to shift gears to electric. What we've got here on slide six is the debt profile for the electric system. You'll see that the debt outstanding there is totally paid off by fiscal year '26. The payment's a little under 1.8 million dollars in the, the year that's coming up, that FY '22 bar, and then it steps down, and by 2027, all of it has been repaid. So the debt you have outstanding today for electric purposes is, is pretty short debt. It's paid off within the next five years. We understand there's some discussion, I'm on the right-hand side, some discussion going on about a couple of potential electric projects. One is a system capacity investment. We're using a $10 million estimate right now. Talk about a new substation, addition of transformers. If you haven't, I'm sure you'll be briefed on sort of the, the details of that project and the merits of that project. But we're going to work with that project, and then one other, a battery energy storage system. We're using, it's B-E-S-S for short. We're using a $5 million placeholder for that. Utility scale battery storage system, my understanding is, it helps with cost avoidance, it helps with peaking, peak demand and managing the load on the electric system. Our understanding in talking with staff is that if you were to invest in that battery electric storage system, or, excuse me, battery energy storage system, you have the potential to recognize pretty substantial operating efficiencies and savings on that to the tune of about 1.2 million per year. And we're going to talk a little bit about that. The first project, I think, is about reliability, redundancy, different, you know, different points of service and, and supply in your system. The second project there, the B-E-S-S, is more about efficiencies and, and managing the system. What we've done on page seven, and I'll start on the left, just kind of bear with me as we walk through this. Again, we're looking at everything on a fiscal year basis, the year we're about to go into, '22. Column B is in boy, that is the debt service that y'all have to pay on the electric debt that's already outstanding. So it's a million seven, the next year, it's 1.5, 900,000, 700,000, 500,000, then it goes away. We know that, to the penny. That's only going to change if you all change it. If you were to borrow for those two projects, the point-of-delivery, 10 million, the battery pro, program at 5 million, column C is what the debt service might look like for that 15 million dollars of debt. The point-of-delivery is a 20-year borrowing, the battery program is a 10-year borrowing, because that is the, more in line with the expected useful life of those assets. So column C is the projected debt service if you were to determine to move forward with both projects. Column D is, is just a sum, B plus C. So that would be, in theory, the electric system's new debt payment schedule, if you did this, okay? Column E is the estimated operational savings that might be recognized or would be recognized from the B-E-S-S investment. So you're borrowing 5 million to install the equipment, you're paying that back over a 10-year period, and talking with staff, ordered magnitude, there could be something in the range of 1.2 million dollars a year of operational savings derived from that project.
Did you stop at the end of 10 years for shelf life on that battery system or something?
That's my understanding, that at that point, there's an expectation it would be beyond its useful life, maybe would have to be replaced, so that's why we stopped. And we, we kept the debt for that and the operational savings matched at 10 years. So that is a, a credit, if you will, it's a cost reduction. So what we've done in F is we've taken the new debt service plus the operational savings, and we've come up with what we'll call the net debt service and operational savings column, F as in frank. And you'll see that's a million seven, next year, it steps down to 950, it steps up as the new debt comes on. And somewhat of a similar concept of what we talked about on the, the general fund side, we know that next year, for electric, your debt payments on debt you've already issued is 1.7 million. So the thought would be, if you are able and willing to continue to appropriate that level of electric revenues to debt service, the million seven, if you were to do that every year going forward, what is created on the far-right column H are surpluses that will help fund other projects or in, in other ways, help run that electric system more effectively, takes into consideration your operating budget for electric, the rate structure for electric, whatever it might be that you all might choose to do with those, those, I call them, debt and operating reductions. Okay?
Before we get to that next page, Mark, on, you can get 12 million dollars over 10 years, and I would figure that we've never done batteries before. I'd figure a 20% contingency we haven't thought about, you know, that might come up? So if that backs you down to 10, and you get, you're getting five, you're upfront is 5 million, so still, you think profitable to continue looking into that?
Yeah, if I'm following you, so that's 1.2 million, not 12 million, but 1.2. You're, you're looking at initial investment of 45 million dollars.
Correct, Charlie.
So 45 million dollars, you're looking at about, uh, you know, a, a three-and-a-half, four-year payback to pay that off. And then at that point, you're strict revenue, and that's the reason why. But, but still, yet, he's capturing the debt service on that side, so it, it, it's kind of canceling, the, the C is the debt service for the battery as well as the, the, the station. If we backed out the station, then you'd probably still just see that 600,000 dollar number, is that correct? Or somewhere thereabouts of it? So you would be, you would...
Does your 5 million already have a contingency for feeders and things like that, that you'll, you'll have to, just like with those charging stations, you don't just go put a charging station in, you've got to, you know, put some...
Yeah, that's the full, that's, that'd be the full project cost, because the intent of the battery system is, is you install the battery at the station where the bus is at, and you plug it into that versus some, all, you know, all the, all these different connections and everything. So basically, your, your avoidance at that point, you'll be, you'll be shaving the peak demand by applying the battery during the peaks times, and then during the non-peak times, that battery will be recharging, waiting for the next peak.
If, if we were to go overboard on the amount of, of peak demand savings that the power agency will allow, is there any way we could work some kind of program out with surrounding public utilities and, and get credits or something worked out with sister cities that do not do this? I know, Charlie, we had talked about that a little bit. I know, Charlie, we had talked about that a little bit, as to where, you know, have we, are we okay in the amount? Like, I know that Fayetteville came into a cogeneration issue that they weren't allowed to cogenerate so much because it put us, it put a, it put the vertical and greater, you know, Duke energy in a bad way of having all these millions of dollars in equipment, and then we're in effect kind of at some point competing against them. But have you looked any more into that?
Yes, sir. There's presently no cap on our contract for energy, battery energy storage at the moment.
Well, do you think 5 is the relevant figure, or do you, should we be looking at 10 on batteries or 1 or...
Well, I think we want to look at, 5 is a nice, good number to go in with.
Right.
Look at the financials there, see if it makes sense at 5. If it makes sense at 5, maybe we might want to take a look at 10 megawatts instead of 5 megawatts.
But now, a long while we're talking about was financing. We don't want to get into any type of solar stuff, right? We're not looking into us getting into solar farms or anything, we're just looking at the battery storage.
We're just exploring our finances right now, we're exploring the feasibility of how this project fits our needs.
Okay.
And thanks to Scott, he kind of explained, I believe what we're interpreting you to say is 20% of the 12 million over that period of time for the 10 years, if we did that, we would still be generating $10 million of revenue. So yes, we would be doubling our money over, if $5 million investment equals, we're going to get that paid off plus get an extra $5 million over that period of time. Yes, sir, you're correct.
Does that include the debt service to electric cities for our portion of what remains from the power generation plants, or is that just our AMI?
I believe that is, the '22 to '26 is the debt for...
That's your direct debt as a city for the electric system. I believe that does not include your share of electric cities debt, that is a more operating...
Does not include the debt service associated with our wholesale power supply costs.
Okay, thank you.
And that value, Charlie, just so they know?
That's another $13 million that will roll off in 2025. It's about $1.3 million, oh no, about $3 million per year that we're paying out.
$3 million per year, and that's the defecence debt from the sale of the assets whenever we sold from the agreement with electric cities.
Right.
That is covered, the payments of that are covered in your operating budget. So this is just the debt associated with different electric debt issuances you've done over the years.
But that would still be revenue available to spend for debt? Okay, thank you.
Correct. So again, the takeaway here is because of that nice decline in your electric debt there, like the general fund, you have a nice decline, you have some abilities to, if you're able and it works in your budget, to kind of hold your funding for debt service constant, it creates some natural capacity to take on some additional debt if that's needed and desired for projects. And in the case of the electric with these two projects, in addition to the savings that you'd recognize from the B-E-S-S, this new debt could be brought on without having an impact on your rates.
To ask Charlie one question, are you, in your substation, are you talking about keeping the Lewis Farm Road, because I know we had some discussions that maybe that wasn't the most maximal location, are you keeping Lewis Farm and then doing another one elsewhere?
Yes, sir. Thank you. That's all we had, that was the end of this presentation. But happy to answer any more questions if there are any. As I said, there's all that and a lot more in that detailed book if there's a desire to look at some of the more detailed cash flows, but thought this was appropriate.
If my question's out of line, just tell me, but a couple of things that New Bern does not do that I've always had an interest in looking into that other cities do, and you might have experience in this, Charlotte and other cities do affordable housing outside of what housing authority does. They see particular needs in their city and even in buyout. Whatever FEMA doesn't do, they actually have increased taxes a little bit to special case buyouts and things like that. So I wanted to ask you, from a financial standpoint, do you have any recommendations or thoughts on additional affordable housing for our citizens? And the other thing that I had here, some cities do, in the electric enterprise, they actually do energy efficiency winterizations and things. And what they do where our citizens are complaining about rate, and it's really actually not rate, it's a consumption problem, and they're, you know, they're just using double the consumption because their house is so inefficient. Some cities actually go in through their enterprise or other means, and they will have a loan pool where, you know, a citizen can go in and borrow the money they don't have. And the problem we run into is so much of the property in New Bern that needs winterizing is tenant occupied, so we have this tremendous landlord issue of getting the landlords to do it. And there the problem is, is that the tenant's paying the bill, you know?
Right.
So we would have to work through that, but the question is, do you ever in other cities work on the potential savings for our citizens of consumption by means of loan pools available at reasonable rates where a hypothetical, a citizen is paying $300 a month in a bill, and when they do a winterization and they pay us $58 a month for $8,000 worth of work for two years, their bill goes down to $125. Do you ever run upon that?
I'll take them in reverse order. I have a little less experience with your second scenario about helping energy, you know, upfit residences or what have you for energy efficiency. I would think something like the electric cities would have some good intel on how that's being done in other cities. I unfortunately don't have a lot of, or any real direct experience on that. On the affordable housing, we do, we have seen recently some trends towards local governments deciding that they want to be helpful in affordable housing. We've seen it a few ways, what I might call land banking, where they find opportunities to purchase property and then kind of get control of that property and partner with other entities, not-for-profits or I suppose even for-profit entities, to partner and say, look, we've got the land set aside that is for affordable housing, we are taking proposals from the private sector or the not-for-profit sector to partner on an affordable housing project. We have even seen some local governments that have chosen to go to their voters and vote affordable housing, general obligation bonds, so that they have a source of funding to either purchase that land or contribute money to some other project that they feel is worthy, and maybe they have a process for assessing different projects that come before them for their financial support. So we are seeing that, and I'm sure there are other ways that local governments are participating in affordable housing, but those are a couple of ways we've seen most recently. Purchasing property and sort of facilitating it from that regard, or potentially contributing financially to maybe the vertical construction of affordable housing for people that come to them and request a partnership.
Well, I mean, everybody in New Bern is waiting around for the one or two a year 9% tax credits, you know, that seems to be the only model that works. And the reason I was asking, there's got to be other, the 4% does not work, you have to do the 9% around here, and you only get so many of them. So I was wondering if you had any other examples in North Carolina where cities, when they're not necessarily in sync with the housing authority's growth rate, and they're having to work around that because of the culture or whatever's in place, are there other ideas you have on finance packages other than a 9% tax credit that a city like New Bern could look into?
I'd be happy to look into that, I don't have anything off the top of my head this evening, but I'd be more than happy to look into that and follow up with staff.
Thank you, sir.
Does the board have questions?
We're serving at the pleasure of the board. If y'all want to discuss further some of these options, but ultimately, it's some direction of the board would be good. We can have another follow-up work session on some of these larger projects that we want to put together and potentially look at this debt and utilizing, essentially, it becomes more of an act of, as Ted has mentioned here, it becomes more of an act in budgeting process of being consistent with that debt and then utilizing the consistency of what you have in your debt profile to be able to utilize for future purchases and not increasing what your budget would be. And I think that's kind of indicated in some of his previous slides here.
Would you be putting a package or information to us for our budget that says, okay, here are the capital purchases we need, i.e., we've talked about a fire station, i.e., you know, Martin Marietta, i.e. other things that we have talked about, would you put that together then and just present that to us and say, here it is, you know, you want option A, B, or C? Do we zero cents, one cent, two cents to do it all or do part of it? Or I'm just trying to understand what our next step is. We've asked to have this conversation, now we've got it. Where do we go, you know, I just don't want to beat this horse, we're going to go somewhere with it or not.
I think my staff and I could certainly put our dream list together, but ultimately, you're serving your citizens, and your citizens may want certain things, or they may have mentioned things that they want. And this is where the seven of the board need to agree on what that debt is going to look like, what projects you want to get accomplished, what vision y'all have in what the future is for New Bern. And then it's up to me to get with my staff to make sure to put together the estimates and to put together the cost and how we plan to pay for that through Ted's programs or however we're planning to do it through debt service, whether y'all want to do it through just installment financing, whether you want to do it through, if you want to put it out to the public for vote, whatever, he's mentioned several different ways in which we can do this. But ultimately, you know, I can sit here and it can be Mark's vision or it can be the board's vision based on your constituents. So that's really up to y'all.
Calls for a work session or something, but I think we need to at least, you know, put our ideas down or work on something. I would hate to see the opportunity go by if we do have that ability and there's many, many needs in our city.
I think it would be very important for the board to kind of brainstorm with themselves and figure out what you determine your top priorities to be, and then at that point, we can start building off of that. And if that's, as Ted and Charlie talked about, if that might be looking at this battery storage program, there's two different options I know we've been presented with. One is we reap all the rewards and we put forth total investment, we could go into and have a shared revenue standpoint with a firm that comes in and installs these things. It may be that the redundancy and resiliency is very important. So that's the $10 million project where we want to have that extra tap into our Duke transmission lines to allow for the future growth south of the town and allow for some redistribution of some of our load within the system. Those are things that Charlie probably needs to come and brief the board on if that's something you want to move forward with. With regards to the general fund, you all know, we've got the large Martin Marietta project, we've got some public safety things, it's been discussed in the previous years. We've got lots of different projects. I mean, a couple of years ago, we used straight-up cash to do a large resurfacing project. I mean, you know, if that's kind of visions, we can definitely do those. Hopefully, a lot of our stormwater issues are being fixed through the, some of our FEMA reimbursements that we're getting through the permanent work and the CAT-A work, which is debris and sediment removal. But there's still projects out there that need to be done, there's some upsizing of pipes that probably still need to be done. I know, Mr. Kenzie, you have that one over there with News Boulevard, that, you know, you've got some conflicting issues. It may be some parks and recreation-related things and projects that need some work. So it really just depends on what the board's vision is as far as our debt service and large capital project financing that we do.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I want to agree with my colleague, Alderman Bingo. I do think it would be conducive for us to probably have like an extra meeting to kind of talk about maybe if we all, you know, bring to the forefront like we did before, I think a couple of years ago, like our top priorities. Because I know I've been in talks with a few of the communities that I represent about sidewalks and ditches, and to really have an understanding of how that works, maybe there's a way we can incorporate that within the, you know, to see if that's something that could be done, you know, through the whole city, you know? Because we have communities that ask to have sidewalks or to have, you know, not ditching, but to have sidewalks. And we know that not every community is conducive to be able to do that based on the infrastructure. But the ones that we do have the ability to do, maybe that can be incorporated or be a part of a bigger project. So that was, that's my thought process on this.
Definitely something that could be included sidewalks, I didn't even think about. But Ted, if you would, go back to your one slide that shows Case 1, Case 2, Case 3, just as a getting started point. That's the numbers you need to be looking at. If you don't want to raise the tax rate any at all and just utilize the existing debt that we've budgeted for, then we've got $6.7 million of lending power to go out and we can go do projects. So again, we can put together a small laundry list of projects that will accumulate $6.67 or $6.9 million and plan on us paying that over 15 years. If you want to do more, then you can do some tax rates or we can find some other way. It's going to be very difficult to find, you know, that amount of money in the budget by cutting, but I mean, it certainly could be done, it's just we've got to be willing to accept what those cuts would be. But one cent on a tax rate, which is $330,000 plus the 200 of debt that would be rolling off, that's $500-some thousand, you can do $10 million for, and you'd be paying that principal payment for 15 years. Same thing, and that's a medium-sized laundry list of projects. If you want the supersized laundry list, it's 14 million. So that's kind of give you an idea.
We have this guy here, so we already have those things already in place that we discussed. So we can go ahead and put those on paper and actually go at those there and use that because we have, FEMA already have come in to take care of one of the largest projects that we really needed money for, which is cleaning all these ditches. So that's a start right there for Marietta Park, the elevator, looking at doing all the streets. So we have something to actually pick from, something to work with, something to go from. So if we can go ahead and do that and have that in place and work from there, I think we can move along.
Above our projects, we're thinking about, some of them are projects that, and particularly Mark, if we could kind of look at the COVID relief things, like the loss of the Martin Marietta Park, a lot of that probably you could, you know, use some of the COVID relief, we talked about that. The other thing is some of the improvements we make, once the improvement's in place, zero cost other than reserves and normal maintenance. Other items, when we make capital improvements, there's a host of new employees, which is a continual, has to be sustained expense on the power of the city. So let me ask you this, along those lines, I've been on board 15 years now, and I've seen about three or four times where the city almost moved forward and did some really remarkable things for our citizens. It always started out with three to five to six projects. And then the board, as we are all human, we kept layering it on and layering it on, and then it was 15 and 20 projects, and it got to the point where it never went anywhere because... Do you have any kind of experience or wisdom as how the board could start out with reasonable expectations of projects that we can sustain if there's 20 employees added, or that are projects that we already are going to receive money either from FEMA reimbursements, if you get $33 million worth of drainage repair, there's probably going to be a lessened amount of need for maintenance in your public works, which that money could be used somewhere in the general fund elsewhere. So do you have the experience of how a city can hold the line on the number of projects where it's realistic, reasonable, and that we can get it approved and move forward?
What we try to bring to that discussion is sort of the affordability, what can you afford to do, and what's a priority for one board member versus another, you know, just, we have a hard time helping with that. But trying to help you understand collectively, if you want to do X million or Y or Z, this is how you could get it done, these are the things you're going to need to be prepared to do to fund it. And hopefully, that's helpful, but it didn't solve the whole question.
When you go to give financing, normally, if a board is split four to three, that doesn't go over real well with a bank, does it?
I mean, those financings get done, but it is perilous, and the LGC usually makes note of that, and other things happen that we know that...
I think a fair way to look at this would be for all of us...
Would be for all of us to come into a workshop, you know, maybe with our top three, with the idea that it's a zero tax. So we're not going to add anything to the tax and try to see, we might have seven times three, 21 different programs. They might whittle down to the three. And I think you got to start there and realize we have to be in one accord. Are we going to raise taxes or we're not? If we're feeling good and we'll raise it a penny, okay, then our budget just went up to 10.4 and we could squeeze another project in there. But I think we would have to come to that workshop with a willingness to know, you know, we're going to start with a pad full of maybe projects whittled down to fit in that 6.69 number because that's it if we decide we don't want to raise taxes. And I think that's important. You know, the ditch thing, I think is going to be covered under FEMA potentially. We could do sidewalks all over the city of New Bern. I've seen what's done for Trent Woods. That would be probably pleasing to our citizens. Then maybe money that we had budgeted in public works would then come off the top of that because this would be under this project and we'd have money elsewhere. You know, there's, I know what you're saying because I remember that exact scenario. They just kept throwing things in. I think if we all come with a mindset of either raise tax, not raise tax, these are the three projects we're coming with that are important, we feel, to our wards. I have to give kudos to the staff in that. I think in the last three and a half years, we've got a lot of those projects done that we came in here to look at. We really have done some really good things. And that was because we looked at the budget, we worked with it, and we worked within it. I think this is a great opportunity for us to finish some of the things that we've wanted to do for a long time and just did not have the funding to do. So I would like to suggest that we have a work session where we come, you know, and I think it's got to be at least a half a day where we come ready to put it on the board and start X-ing out and try to put something together. Would that make you crazy right now, Mark?
When's the last time we raised taxes?
It's been a while. Well, let me see. Didn't we go from, is it 43 to 46?
That was when we.
Was the reevaluation?
We've done revenue neutral adjustments. And then when we did away with the storm or the taxes went up, but the storm work went away. Have you ever seen, I can't remember if it's Winston Salem or Greensboro, one of them cities, I used to have newspaper article where they did a, they did a bond referendum and it was about 15 items and it was a check the box where the citizens actually went to the polls and voted on the projects and whatever the citizens want. Have you seen that?
Absolutely, yeah. We see that fairly frequently. And the attorneys will tell you that when you go to your citizens for a referendum, the, there are some, I believe they're legally dictated sort of questions or groupings of projects. It might be streets and sidewalks, which would be different from parks and rec, which would be different from public safety. So if you were to want to move towards a bond referendum, obviously you need to work with your attorneys. But I think you have to organize those questions for the voters according to some broad types of projects you might want to do.
About getting the, our taxpaying citizens involved, especially if we're going to add on more, more of a dollar amount for these projects. Now, if we're going to stay with the 6.69, I think that, okay, that's, that's great. But if we're going to think about raising taxes, I think, Mayor, you're right. We do need to be where we can have our citizens involved in making that decision about raising taxes, even though, and let the citizens, you know, suggest what projects they feel that is most, at this point in time, which is most needed here in the city. So I'm for all of what you said, Alderman Bingo, about having a workshop. I think we do need to talk about this a little bit more extensively because it's, when you go from 6.6 to 10.4 million, I mean, that's a lot of money. So it's a lot of variables that we got to take into account for our citizens. But yet, we're getting these projects completed.
I might just say one more thing. I think all of that is excellent discussion. It may take a little bit of time to evolve on that. And I think the one thing I would say that has set you up nicely to be having this conversation about case one or about the electric is that your current debt profile, either tax-supported or electric, is such that you're going to have some step downs in the future. So I would say as you're going into your budget for FY '22, one of the best things you could do, and I'm sure staff will be able to isolate it for you, is if you do have a reduction in your actual debt service, you might want to consider holding that funding flat because that's what's helping create the capacity. So that, that might be a decision that you come to before approving any projects. And I would just say if that's part of the discussion for the '22 budget, that would be, that would be helpful to recognizing these kind of results.
For the general fund issues, but for us to look at a $5 million investment in electric department with over a million dollar payback in two years, to me, I think that should be put in the budget that staff is working on right now. I don't think there's much discussion that's needed with that one. As long as legally, we're okay with the battery storage and our agreement with Electric Cities, to me, that's a no-brainer.
Is the board good with that? Is it the direction to, for staff to start looking into that battery storage system?
Just as, just to be very clear, since you did mention, you know, that we're clear with the legal end of things. Duke has challenged and sent it to another, Charlie, you may want to mention, they have challenged the FERC ruling on the analysis of our contract based on the batteries. But the FERC ruling was very advantageous to our cities to do so. I know that Electric Cities is also looking at options to do larger battery bank systems for its customers. But we could individually go out there. And that's the reason why we also looked at the other option, which was, you know, basically, we have a company that would be willing to come in, install all of it, but we would only share in the benefits of what that system is. And then at that point, we could, we could do the full board. But I'm happy to move forward with, I feel comfortable with the decision. That's just there's no guarantees. And I don't want to, I just want to make sure and throw everything out there before we do so.
There's always risk with everything that we do, especially in the power supply market because it's largely impacted by fuel and technology. Duke has argued to FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, on three times and petitioned against battery energy storage in our contract. FERC has ruled in our favor all three times. The argument is battery energy storage systems, batteries themselves are excluded, they're silent in our contract. Duke wants to argue that they're generators, and they're not generators. They're a load management device. They store energy. You can dispatch them. Everybody in this, in the industry agrees. I think it's going to be really hard for Duke to argue against that. They've come back to Electric Cities. They've offered some settlements that really make you scratch your head. Basically, hey, let's settle and just shake our hands and not bring this up again. And we said no to that settlement. And then they offered a settlement to allow a cap. And there's no cap right now. So why settle on that? So Electric Cities is working this on our behalf, on behalf of all its membership. They're presently in the process of costing multiple battery energy storage banks to be placed across all of its members' locations. So we can all share in that savings, particularly those communities that don't have the capital to invest it upfront, don't have the staff to support it, that they can buy in. And we'll be offered something along those lines as soon as they get that deal together. Concurrently with that, I'm going out to market and doing RFQs on our own battery energy storage system where we take all the risk, we supply all the capital, we take all the, we share all the avoided costs. I'm also being solicited by other service providers that want to play the game differently. Just give me a connection to your boss. They'll invest all the capital. They'll take all the risk and will give you a small percentage of what your avoided costs would be. And I'd like to bring those all back to you at some point in time. I think we talked about earlier, maybe dabbling a little bit, all of it. So you spread out your risks in your place in the market across the board rather than being all in on one. That's your decision to make, but I want to give you those options.
Is there any type of a differential on, if you put 100 widgets of electricity into that battery, you get 100 back? Or is there any type of resistance or anything that you don't get that?
They immediately start to degrade.
What?
They immediately start to degrade. So if I size a battery bank at five megawatts, after the first time I discharge it, it reduces and it reduces. It's a small percentage. But we talked about a 10-year life cycle on those. By the time the 10th year comes around, those batteries are ready to be replaced. And.
Over time, you continue to use your cell phone, your battery storage continues to dwindle and dwindle. Eventually, you get tired of it.
Like a light bulb. Every time you turn on the light bulb, you get less light out of it than when it was brand new.
So when you have to replace them, is that a whole new $5 million or is there, is it $2 million or something? Do you know that?
It would be less. I don't have replacement costs with me, but it's much, much less. There's a lot of control systems in that upfront cost. There's where these batteries are stored. There's connection. There's transformation. There's inverters that go involved that are additional cost beyond just changing out the batteries.
And are cities, for the most part, going toward this away from cogeneration with natural gas generators, peak demand, you know, like we've had in the past, some of them in different locations, Hattershot, Walmart, Havilack, et cetera. Are you getting away from that and looking more toward this?
Well, I think I need to pay attention to all of it, especially as emissions regulations change. And we could be limited in the future regarding generation's emissions. So battery energy storage is coming on. It's a great time for us to try it, to get involved with that market. It may end up replacing generators as our generator fleet ages or retires. But I think we need to do both right now as long as we can play in that, in that market. It's all avoided cost. And as long as we can get a return on the investment, it's.
Okay. Well, I think we want to move forward on the batteries, don't we?
You're the expert in this field. So if you feel that this is what we need to do as a city right now, right at this point in time, then I think we need to listen to you and we need to move forward with your directions.
Thank you. I believe we're heading in the right direction.
Steve, what else we got on that item?
It's kind of in the board's hands. If y'all want to do work session, if y'all want us to do, I mean, we could even do a survey monkey and put together a bunch of capital, say, pick five. And we, it's up to the board at this point what y'all want to direct us to do and bring back to y'all.
What do you typically do in your, in your job when, you know, you make a presentation and then we decide to move forward with things? Where, what do you do? What involvement do you have?
Well, we, like I said earlier, we are there to help try to provide the financial perspective on those lists of projects that you might want to do, the amounts, the timing. I've seen, I've sat through meetings and retreats where, you know, they, the council or the board, you know, goes around the list and puts the sticky notes on their first priority, second priority. You know, I've seen all sorts of different means to sort of quantify and categorize everybody's desires and priorities into one cohesive plan. But we're, our expertise is really about, if that's what you want to do, how do you fund it and what's the impact on the budget? And how do we get that done?
Well, I know that, you know, some projects are very popular, like the Martin Marietta, and some projects like sidewalks, you know, might not be as glamorous, something to think about. But we sorely need the connectivity of our neighborhoods and all throughout New Bern. And the sidewalks would be a very important project. And it would be one that I wouldn't want to get sidelined by a more, you know, emotionally kind of charged amenity.
Right.
Mike's working, but for Martin Marietta Park because especially with everything's going on. I know we're trying to get to normal. Everyone's getting vaccinated, but having those different amenities at that park allow for families to get out and get some fresh air and get the sun hitting on them. So I'm definitely in favor in any type of, you know, budget amendment or any funds to go towards, you know, building that up a lot sooner than what we have because we are down one facility. But, you know, it's, I think it's a good investment to be able to get that up and going, hopefully an amphitheater and, you know, get some concerts and stuff out here. And, you know, and I know that doing that, we're able to bring in revenue for our city as well, which is a benefit because we take those funds and continue to beautify and, you know, upkeep the infrastructure in our city. So I'm all in favor of what we need to do to get these listed and get them funded.
Perfect. I know it'd be a perfect opportunity for us to build that new fire station that's needed. Don't you agree, Jeff?
Jeff Rugieri? If you're asking Jeff.
So I think, I think we need to have some serious discussions in a work session.
Based on how the staff and the city manager and everybody handles our money, how we have governed over the last three years that I've been on the board, that we need to go ahead and take care of the majority of things that we need to get done. And again, if it's one or two cents and the community is fine with it, I think we go ahead and get it done and knock it off our list that we have the fire, you know, the fire station and everything set to go. I mean, I'm in support of the progress that we're doing. And I think this is the best bet is going ahead and putting it out there, getting the votes. If they want to support it, let's get it done.
How the public is going to, our taxpaying citizens is going to like us raising taxes. But to raise taxes and get some of these issues under control, and especially water issues, I really can't speak for the public, but I think I do know a lot of people in Ward Five. I don't think they would have a problem with the taxes being raised if we're going to get some of this water under control where families can come and go and enter and exit into their homes and not have to worry about water just from, you know, a normal storm. So I'm all for, you know, doing whatever we can do as a board to get a lot of problems resolved here in this, in this city. And housing, of course, and we're working on housing. That's a plus. So we're working on housing. But I think that if we don't get our water issues under control, what's the need of building houses? I mean, you know, we got to get the water under control. But I'm all for anything this board wants to do because we have, first of all, we have got to take care of our citizens.
Yeah, I agree. Again, I would much rather pay one penny and have a smooth road to ride on than beating the front end of my car out of line every time I drive to town. Yeah, that's right.
So Mark, what is the next day that we can put this workshop together that we can go ahead and start moving forward?
Of, I'm trying to pull it in my calendar here. I'm not, I mean, we should have a pretty good idea based on the board, for the board, in our budget we had submitted from our department heads to move forward with some of the capital projects that they've planned for. What I don't know is if there's wish lists of the board to include on that and whether or not we need to put budgetary numbers to those. And, you know, that's, that's a difficult thing. So my end is fairly easy. If y'all got wish list stuff that needs to go on that list, I mean, we can try to put something on there relatively quickly. But I mean, it's, it's the board's decision as far as when you want to have the meeting.
We're waiting for you to tell us what is the date that is available.
So I think it would be based on, so we have a work session. This is for us as a board to discuss what we feel should be at the top. Before we do that, are we going to have them do a doodle on what we think or just hash it out that day? Like just get everything?
It is a good idea maybe for all of us to submit the top three things. I think that would, to start and put it in there. So at least staff could get the information because, you know, I could say, yeah, I want sidewalks all over New Bern, but they still need to be prepared at that meeting to know what is the cost to finish it. And if we show up at the meeting, that may not be an easy task. Would you agree, Mark? I mean, would you rather have that information prior?
Any kind of pies that we don't cook live would be great. I mean, anything that we can have pre-planned would be awesome. So if you've got projects on a list specifically, let's say you wanted sidewalks, maybe you could do A, B, C, and D underneath of it that are your priority sidewalk projects. And then we can go out there and say, okay, well, there's. well, there's 5,000 feet of sidewalks. Matt can put a number on that.
Right.
So any detail, I think it'd be great if I got an email from seven different board members that had three different projects and maybe little subsets of those projects if it's related to paving or sidewalks or whatever, that would be great.
So why don't we do this just to move it along? So how about everybody by next Tuesday, which is, we don't have a meeting one week. If everyone would please send an email to our city manager with your top three, you know, or call him or whatever, your top three items that you would like to see funded in this. Now, you know, then he can come back at the end after we look at it and say, ain't going to fit in the zero tax frame and ain't going to fit one cent. We might have to go to two cents. I understand that. But then we can say, then at the point we're there, we could say, all right, you know, how many think this is really a top priority or, you know, and that's what, we're just going to have to pick and choose, but be ready to do that. But Mark, is that acceptable to you? A week?
That certainly works for me. And then what I would-
When do we want to do the actual meeting?
Yeah, I guess, you know, that's going to depend on everybody's schedule. I would rather do it during the week in the afternoon. I know that is difficult for you, Jamie, but if we could try to work around Jamie's schedule, what would be best for her?
Can we do it April 16?
That's the date that I got that I was looking at because I'm just trying to look-
Is that Thursday?
Is that a bad day for you?
That's a Friday. 16th is a Friday.
Can't do it that day.
Is that a bad day?
Like I said, I think most of our capital projects are put together. I don't know what your capital list is going to consist of, so I will try to do my best to get it pulled together. Timing wise, it works good for us because my intent is to present the budget to you on the 27th. So I certainly would like to have this incorporated into the budget if we're looking at doing some debt related issues.
Jamie, are you available all that day? Can we do it in the morning?
If you want to start at 8:00?
Yeah, I can do it like 8:00 to 12:00.
That'll work for me to do 8:00.
My anniversary weekend, and I'm going to take a little vacay.
Yeah. It'd be easier for me to do it in the morning.
Okay. So if we could, if that would be amenable to you, I mean, we could do something that Friday morning if you wanted to.
8:00 to 12:00 on the 16th?
Nine, nine to 12.
Or whatever, whatever would work best. That would be fine. Is everybody okay with that? We may have to find a place to hold it, though.
Excuse me?
Is that what would be preferable for you? 9:00 to 12:00? Yeah, that'd be fine.
Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
Nine, I think they're, everybody have coffee.
Everybody up at nine?
I'll have at least three cups by then, so I'll be ready.
So April the 16th, 9:00 AM, where at?
Oh.
I think that would be your best.
Okay.
You going to make that motion?
I make a motion that we have a special call workshop on Friday, April the 16th, beginning at 9:00 AM through noon to be held at Development Services to discuss capital projects.
Motion and second is there discussion. City and I, all three of your motions say aye.
Aye.
All three saying aye. Period. Anything else on this line?
I think that'll be it, sir.
We really appreciate the question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution temporarily closing portions of Middle Pollock and Craven Street for street cafes. Similar to last year, Swiss Bear has requested to temporarily close portions of Middle Pollock and Craven Streets to accommodate the operation of street cafes. The requested dates are every Friday and Saturday from April the 2nd, 2021, to November the 27th, 2021, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. So that won't be throughout the night. It's only 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM on both Friday and Saturday. There's a memo included in your packet from Mr. Hughes. I know Lynn is here if you have any questions for her, but very similar to what we did last year during COVID period.
Streets won't be closed during the day. It's just in the evening because we did have some concern from some of our merchants, but it would just be the Friday evening and Saturday evening. So if there are no questions, Mayor, I'd like to-
I did, Sabrina. Just, no, I just, I just wanted to make sure that you did say that you, you know, you spoke with the business owners and everybody was okay with it?
Yeah, they were, the concern was closing it during the day on Saturday. And I believe, Lynn, you've had that, some of that same conversation.
So now it's just evenings, Friday and Saturday?
It's just the Friday evening, closes at 5:00, reopens at 10:00, and then again on Saturday. So it is open through Saturdays.
Perfect, okay.
Everybody good? Yes, ma'am?
Pertaining to the, the Middle Street and downtown area, but would this also apply if needed to, if there's other areas of the city that people want to close a particular street for this cafe?
This request is specific for these streets. Any closure that would be requested for some event or whatever needs to come before the board to approve. So whoever has a closure request, whatever street it may be, for whatever date, they need to come and have it approved through the board.
Okay.
So this does not apply citywide, in other words.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution temporarily closing portions of Middle Pollock and Craven Street for street cafes.
Motion and second is there discussion. City and I, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Motion carries. Item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight, authorizing the city manager execute contracts for the Hurricane Florence Category A Drainage Ditch Project within the Bryces Creek and Wilson Creek Drainage Basins. As y'all are well aware, over the last several years, the city has been working with FEMA on a project to remove sediment and debris from many, many miles, probably about 66 miles of drainage throughout the city. This project will be worked to address Bryces Creek and Wilson Creek Drainage Basins for Category A work, which is the debris and sediment. Carolina Cleaning and Restoration LLC submitted the lowest bid, $345,680. It's requested that city manager be authorized to execute this with Carolina Cleaning and Restoration for the project and along with any other change orders that are within the budget amount. The memo is included from Mr. Montaine. He and George are here. There's bid tabulation also for your review. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those.
Board have questions?
I tried to look on these plans as best as I could. Red Robin Lane, is that part, I know that's part of this basin, right? Does this particular project include anything on Red Robin Lane? It does?
It does.
Okay, thank you.
This particular lane includes the Red Robin Lane or does the whole project, does it, did they finally, did they finally obligate Red Robin Lane? I know there was a couple of issues with it.
Matt's correct. Red Robin was, it has been allocated right now. So, but this is, that's for Cat D work on that section of the ditch right there. But this is just for Bryces and Wilson Township's seven work for this contract.
And Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but this now means that this entire Cat A and Cat D ditch project for the city of New Bern has been obligated, correct?
That is correct. We had that FEMA update meeting today, and we were informed that every, the very last one, which was one of the Cat D projects, has been obligated. So everything's been obligated at this point.
That's a wonderful accomplishment.
So you're saying Cat A is basically finalized, completed?
It is not completed. It has been obligated from FEMA to be funded.
All right, thank you.
We're talking to probably somewhere in close to 30, between 30 and $33 million worth of work. It's going to be-
That's been obligated, yes, sir.
And it's the board's pleasure on item number eight.
I would like to make a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute contracts for Hurricane Florence Cat A Drainage Ditch Project within the Bryces Creek and Wilson Creek Drainage Basins.
Motion and second is there discussion. City and I, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Neff?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number nine.
As the board is aware, NC DOT has requested the city relocate fiber utilities to accommodate the construction of US 70 James City Project along with water, sewer, electric, everything else. The fiber is jointly used by the city in Craven County. Staff recommends abandoning the old fiber cable and installing a new fiber cable that will bypass the limits of the NC DOT project. The cost of this will be a shared equally, will be shared equally between the city and the county, and the work will be performed by the city's public utility electric workers. By providing the labor, the material costs will be offset, and staff estimates that there will be a net zero impact on the city expenditures. Any unexpected cost will be absorbed through NC DOT project fund. In a local agreement is proposed with Craven County to establish each party's responsibilities with respect to the new cable. This has been a long-going working relationship that we have with them in partnership. There's a memo included from Mr. Bouchard. Myself, Scott, Mr. Bouchard are here to answer any questions you may have.
Is the board have any questions?
To adopt the resolution approving an interlock agreement with the Craven County for fiber.
Motion and second is there discussion. City and I, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 10.
10 is a resolution authorizing city manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Fund Development LLC for grant writing services. As you had requested, the city issued RFQs for grant writing services and received five qualified responses. After reviewing and scoring the responses, two firms were tied at the highest ranking. Staff reviewed the hourly rate structure for both of those firms and selected the lower cost. It is recommended that city manager enter into the contract negotiations with Fund Development LLC. There's a memo that's included in your files from Ms. Olin Salin with the Development Services. We're happy to answer any questions.
Is this an addition to the grant writer we already have on staff?
We do not have a grant writer on staff. We had contracted with Ms. Shields with Fund Development LLC for work previously, and it was a request of the board for us because her contract was coming up. Do again, we submitted out to RFQ to provide additional opportunities for people to bid on it.
Okay.
This company is, has provided the monies in the grants that we need and that you feel good with her service, with that service to continue with that service?
What is it now, Margaret? 1.8 million?
1.67.
$1.67 million that she's in grant funds that she's gotten over the years, or the two years that was in Florence that we've been applying for stuff.
Amanda, where is Wither's Avenue based out of?
I believe it's Raleigh area.
So they're not local? They're not, they're not local here in New Bern?
Right, they're not in eastern North Carolina or New Bern.
Okay, thank you.
They don't have offices here.
Well, I know that Mark worked some miracles with the Fireman Museum and helped us quite a bit with some grants there. So I would like to make the motion that we authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Fund Development LLC for grant writing services.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Approving streetlights on Beach Street. Mr. Charles McSorley of 310 Beach Street has requested additional street lighting, which is also, which is in the Bridgestone area, for those who are familiar with Beach Street. The area was evaluated and determined to not meet the city's light standard. The street is not maintained by the city of New Bern, but is located within the city limits. The city will reach out to Duke Energy, the electric provider for lighting options, and recommendations of three different fixtures to be installed. Public utilities will not incur installation costs. Duke will charge an installation fee. We estimate that monthly cost to be between $7.33 and $11.94 per fixture, which will be paid for by Public Works in their budget for all other street lighting that we do within the city. There's a memo included from Mr. Bouchard. Happy to answer any questions.
Is the board have any questions?
No questions, just a comment down the road. This is in my ward, and I believe this is Charlie, the third one. Always Charlie. Is this the second one? You know, one person came forward, another. Bridgestone's an area that's really weird because one house could be in the city of New Bern, the house next door is not in the city, but yet they are requiring our services, and that's lighting and everything else. So I really would like to see a policy so it's, that we know exactly what we need to do. Because what's happening, neighbor is talking to neighbor is talking to neighbor, and it would be easy if we could just have a standard policy or something. I know it meets the lighting standard. We send somebody out there, but because most of Bridgestone is on Duke, we don't maintain the roads. I don't know, Mr. Davis, if it's something you think we need to maybe sharpen our policy with, but just to make it easier. Because going forward, I have a feeling we'll have this request more often. Okay?
I just have one thing, too. Since I've been elected, I know we've had a lot of individuals that will come and they would get the light evaluated. Wouldn't it be, you know, conducive to us to like, you know, at some point kind of go and, you know, survey all of them so that we're ahead of the game instead of being behind it? And then if that's something that can be in a project of replacing these lights and getting them up to standard, we're already up to standard and we don't have to worry about it moving forward. That's just an idea, thought process to throw out there. Because I know there's a lot of individuals like, you know, Alderman Bingle said, they're going to start coming one by one, and it's like, let's just be ahead of the game of getting them replaced or, you know, up to standard. I don't know how that works. I don't know if it's feasible.
We could certainly have staff evaluate that, just, you know, understand that there's going to be costs associated with that. I think our street lighting budget's about $450,000 a year right now. So if we do an evaluation full blown of every single city where we are not meeting the lighting standard, then we need to make sure, we'll have a pretty significant budget amendment probably to fix all that. But we can certainly do that at the direction of the board.
I'm just throwing it out there for a thought process. I didn't know what you thought, if you thought that would, even if you're doing it in sections, you know, I just figured it would, you know.
Taking for staff to go out and do, and it would be a big number for the city. The utility would certainly love to sell it to them, but it's a matter of budgeting that. And quite frankly, when we put up streetlights, some folks don't want them. We get as many complaints to take them down as we do to install them. So I think your approach with let the market make the request is probably appropriate at this time.
That's true. I have had somebody want their light taken out because it was shining in their bedroom, and they didn't want the light at night. So, I mean, you-
We struggle with that every day.
Gotcha.
If there's no other questions, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving streetlights on Beach Street.
Second.
Motion and second is there discussion. City and I, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 12.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12 is an ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges. The last scheduling fee of charge was adopted on the 10th of November, 2020. It desires to amend the schedule to include fees associated with the rental of mobile stage that we recently purchased. There's a memo included from Mr. Hughes that's included in your packet, along with the red line version of what the new schedule of fees and charges will be. Happy to answer any questions.
It's the board's pleasure on item 12.
I make a motion that we adopt a ordinance and amend the schedule of fees and charges.
Second.
Motion and second, is there further? Motion and second, is there further discussion? See, and let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm number 13.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board, item number 13 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 50 regarding restraint of animals in parks. This is to address issue of animals running loose in city parks. Staff is seeking to add a new section of Chapter 50 to the code ordinances. Section 50-33 will require all animals to be under physical control of a person and restrained by a chain, leash, or harness. Dog parks would be exempt from this requirement, as would trained service animals and working police dogs. There's a memo included from your packet from Foster. Happy to answer any questions.
I think that's a bigger issue. Should we include cemeteries in that as well? I mean, haven't we had in the past some problems?
Not that I'm aware of.
One cemetery, New Bern Memorial. Memorial, we had some complaints about dog, people taking their dog in there and turning them loose, letting them run.
I have heard that as well.
I don't know, Foster, have you heard, heard that from staff? But I have heard, yeah, people will walk into the cemeteries and unleash their dogs and just let them run through the cemetery.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In my discussions with the city attorney, the current ordinance does allow for enforcement in cemeteries, so if someone is walking in the cemetery, a dog without a leash, the current ordinance, not what you're looking at tonight, would suffice, and the police would just have to cite if it's reported.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend Chapter 50 regarding restraint of animals in parks.
Motion and second, is there further discussion? See, and let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm number 14.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 14 is an ordinance amending Section 26, Protection of Property of Article 2 of Chapter 50 regarding self-propelled vehicles. And I think, Scott, you made a modification on the ordinance to, you've got it in front of you. This is actually to remove the, actually was to remove the, any kind of indication of self-propelled, because this is really meant for skateboards, to remove, because technically skateboards aren't self-propelled. But in response to our citizen concerns, it's requested that this modification be made to the city ordinances to allow skateboards to travel on public streets in certain areas of downtown. This will permit the operation of skateboards and inline skates on designated streets. Redline version was given to you to modify the, and eliminate that self-propelled vehicles portion, so that was on your desk, or on your dice tonight. But Scott, myself, Foster, happy to answer any kind of questions you may have regarding that.
I just have one question. The use of the skateboard and rollerblades is permitted on private property located and set downtown. Why was that crossed out? Does that mean that they can if they have permission, or they...
Yeah, at some point back, I think in the 80s, the city thought that they would try to prohibit skating on private property unless people had permission, and that strikes me as a very poor idea for the city, trying to coordinate with private citizens and collect permission slips. That's a private property issue. If people don't want skateboarders on their private property, they just call PD and get them off their property.
Gotcha.
Or not.
If you look here, it is the, skateboards are not allowed on the following properties owned by the city of New Bern. You have listed Station 3, 1700 National Avenue, which we no longer have.
Gotcha, yeah.
So can we redline that tonight?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So that shouldn't be included in there.
So would that be a motion to approve the ordinance with that?
Yes, that's right.
Instead of enumerating all those, because we move city facilities routinely, can we just say on city-owned property?
Uh...
Or city facility, city-owned facilities?
Well, there are parks, yeah, well, yeah, we could think through that.
Just trying to save us, in case we move a fire station down the road, we won't have to update this ordinance.
Totally understand that. That's been, that's been the way the code's been drafted for decades. It might be wise to have staff give that a look and accept your idea. Tonight, that's probably more than I want to try to tackle tonight. So if you want to adopt it tonight, striking through the station that Alderman Bingle pointed out, then we can circle back at a later date and maybe just delete that whole section.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending Section 26, Protection of Property of Article 2 of Chapter 50 regarding self-propelled vehicles, with the inclusion of Station 3 being removed as city property?
Motion and second is their discussion. See, and let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries. Appointments tonight? Do we have appointments, Alderman Bingle?
No, tonight, sir.
Alderman Astor. Alderman Kinsey.
No, sir.
I'm sorry, Alderwoman Harris, I didn't...
I didn't have any, Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed you there. Alderman Bingle, I mean Alderman Best.
[laughing]
And Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Okay, let's go to attorneys' report.
Nothing for tonight, Mayor.
City managers' report.
I have nothing, sir.
Okay, let's go to new business, starting with Alderman Odom.
Welcome everyone to this side of town. It's nice to be here for a change, and based off of what we've seen in our courtroom, we may be here longer than we anticipated, but I guess we'll wait and see how that goes. But that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Best.
Anything tonight?
Alderman Kinsey.
Not tonight, sir.
Alderman Astor.
Just thanks for everyone in the old airport road area for being patient. Lot of construction taking place out there, they're making some good progress. Road will be closed in front of, around Creekside School for the next couple days, maybe, till Thursday, so everybody just try to avoid that area. Thanks, Mayor.
Alderwoman Harris.
Um, yes, Mayor, I have two. I just wanted to let everybody know that Project Restore is working with the Pembroke Community this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. They're doing a cleanup again, and the contact would be Carol Williams. Her number is okay to give, 252-349-8274, if you want to come out and volunteer. It's also on my Alderman page. And then lastly, on Saturday, April 3, 2021, obviously at 1:00 p.m., Broad Street Christian Church is doing the Unity Youth Culture, is being dedicated. I'm not sure if you guys seen on Broad Street, so if you want to come out and support that as well. Again, thank you to the staff for all the hard work that you do. Again, it's good to be over here on this side of town, down the street, around the corner from where I live, and that's about it. Just continue to wear your mask, social distance, and be safe.
Okay, thank you.
Fun to say thank you to Craven Community College for letting us host our meetings here.
Alderman Bingle.
Just a couple things, Charlie. I need you for a minute. I've had several people lately ask me why their utility bills went up, and I know the reason, I've had the conversation with them. It's their usage went up, that electric, the cost of electricity did not go up, so could you publicly restate that so that our citizens know that if their utility bills were hefty, or more than what they normally used to pay, it's because of cold weather, more usage? You know, I always tell everybody, please check your water and sewer, because maybe something's wrong there, but I've had a half a dozen people complain to me that the city of New Bern has raised our rates.
No, we haven't.
So I want to state that for the record.
We have not raised our rates. The cost of electricity, water, and wastewater has not changed. If they're seeing changes in their normal billing amounts compared to previous months, then it's based on usage. And there's a lot of factors that can go into that usage, the size of the house, the business, the operation, the amount of activity that's going on, number of applications that they're taking towards energy efficiency. Do you drive a, do you fill up at the gas station and put a gas in a, in a vehicle that uses a lot of gas, or do you have one that's very economical and the gases all the same price? Some people pay more than others because they drive more.
And it was colder. We had a...
And it was, it was cold.
We had a little more than usual cold this, this winter. Okay. I just wanted to publicly say that. I don't know if any of the other Aldermen, if you've received that, go ahead, Alderman Harris.
That the governor approved the funds to come down, and so if anybody's having problems to be able to cover their utility bills, or they're struggling, there are still funds you go down to Social Services and apply for those funds as well. Or the county commissioners also approved as well, so don't forget about those resources. If you are struggling to pay your bill during this time, there are resources out there.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Charlie. Mark, the American Rescue Plan, or Rescue America Plan, I don't know exactly what it's called, that's been enacted by the federal government. Are you on top of this? I understand, as of today, there were some seminars and information out on the web, that that money will be funneled to the cities like ours, 50,000 or less, through the state, and that we're going to have a very short window to basically apply and ask for those monies and try to get them into our city. Are you on top of this? Do you have a plan? Is that something you want to share with us? I, I'd like to, you know, get up to speed on that a little bit. I'm trying to get, do some of my own research.
We're definitely on top of it. I know Mary's aware of it, her staff have been made aware of it. So it's an, it's an allocation. New Bern is slated to get about 6.5 million dollars of that, and the first allocation will be in May, 3.22 million dollars, is that correct, Mary? Somewhere right around there. So there are specific ways in which that money can be used. That's where the details come in, that we've got to really dive down and find out what the uses can be for, can be used for. Some of the first things that they talked about was, you know, some infrastructure projects such as water, sewer, broadband, for the municipalities that provided extra pay for personnel due to COVID stuff, they can reimburse themselves with that money. Lots of different things, but we, we just need to get into the full breadth of what we have that's available to us as far as how that money can be spent.
And we have until 2024 to spend it, is that correct?
2024.
I think that's correct, yeah.
2024 to spend it. So, you know, I want this board to be aware, today I really kind of, I didn't have much time, but I started to dive into it. There was an online seminar, there's more information out on the web, but I think it would, it'd be good for us if you would send us some details or just keep us up to speed, because there are funds there that I think can really impact our city.
Another SBA grant program for local business and nonprofit possibly too as well?
Right, now that, I don't, I don't know if it can fund things like that. Again, I don't know the details of it, I just know that the state, the feds are going to give the money to the state, then we have to basically apply to the state for it, is that correct, Mary? Or they're going to send it to us. The state will send it to us, but we have to have a plan for it.
Right, right.
Is there any...
Uh, no, it's, it could be reimbursed for your costs in the city that weren't covered on, I guess, other CARES Act bill that we've got, is that correct? Just a way, ways for us to maybe save money that we had to spend could help us replenish.
I will certainly, we'll continue to investigate that, and honestly, Mary, if you're okay with it, and the board's okay with it, maybe at our next board meeting, I'll just have her give y'all a brief as far as all the different things that it can be spent on. That way you can be brainstorming about what, what we can utilize that money for, because, you know, my understanding is, is that first allocation is just, here's 3.2 million dollars, and then the other one that's forthcoming, I don't know what the exact date is, but they're having, I know our staff's meeting on Thursday regarding it, so we'll dive into it a little bit deeper. Oh, yes, we're on it, in other words, if you haven't figured that out.
Well, I would appreciate the information, I just, because, you know, I'm sure there'll be questions out there, and I'd like to be able to at least speak to it. And then the last thing I just want to say, because I, I know that they love to watch, but today is officially my father's 90th birthday, so Daddy, I know you, if you're on Facebook, you're watching, and I just want to wish him a happy birthday. That's a milestone that we would all like to sign up for, wouldn't we? But he's a two-time Purple Heart veteran, he has survived a lot, and he's still got a lot to go, so I'm, I just want to wish him a happy birthday.
You're gonna, do want to mention a couple things. I know that I've talked with our PI, our Public Information Officer and staff, anything we can do as a city to get our public, our citizens vaccinated. I know that there are some individual groups that are trying to maybe get some other locations in New Bern. The concern I have is, is when the product is available and it's only got a certain shelf life, there's been some cases where there haven't been enough people wanting to receive the vaccination. So I think we want to make sure we do everything we can to make sure our citizens are getting out there and getting that vaccine. The other, I do want to mention that this past week, New Bern lost a true religious leader in our city, Dr. Bill Wingard passed away, pastor of Calvary Baptist Church, and I know several of us in here had a very unique relationship with him. Sabrina, a little bit of the history?
Mr. Wingard came here in 1962, and the reason I know all of this is because my mother-in-law and father-in-law, along with five other couples, started Calvary Baptist Church and hired Mr. Wingard. So 50-plus years ago, hired him to be the pastor, and he stayed here all the time, and he was just a very humble man, and just a godly man, and you've probably encountered him downtown handing out religious tracts and just speaking to people about his faith. And, you know, he learned probably six weeks ago that he had pancreatic cancer, and God was really merciful and took him home really quickly. So a fine man, a fine family, and somebody that, you know, New Bern's going to miss, so our condolences to his, I believe he has four children, three girls and a son, so, and, and his wife survived him.
He'll be sorely missed.
Yeah, he really will be.
I do want to lift up the family at this time. One last thing, Alderman Bingle, would you update the public on our city hall?
Well, so today was the first day that I, I went up there, and unfortunately, the water intrusion into that courtroom is a lot worse than what we had thought. So probably for years, water has been coming through the bricks, and they had to, the, the bottom wood paneling that's all around, they had to pull all of that, and it was all wet behind it, and kind of fix that and seal it. Now, we're seeing the evidence of the plaster coming right off the wall. So that one corner behind where Alderman Harris and I sit, you know, that corner there, it was just, the plaster's just peeling off the wall, so the water intrusion is really bad. So they're in there, and I think we all agree that while they're in there, we need to get this fixed, and we're just not going to cover it up. So I know that Mark and Matt are working and talking with the contractors and trying to, you know, get it straight. We really can't replaster anything until we try to get some of this water issue taken care of, so we potentially, today they thought it would be another four weeks before they could get it, so we could potentially be, be out of our home for a little while, but once it's done, I think we'll really enjoy that it's a new, clean space. And it worries me with water being in there, and, you know, who knows that there's, I didn't, we didn't see any mold, I didn't see any evidence of that, but still, it can't be healthy. So I'm glad that we are in there, we're fixing it up, and hopefully you will agree with me in telling Mark and staff that just, let's get it right. I mean, it's, they're pulling it apart now, let's get it right, let's fix it. They're going to look at some options with the plaster, they may have to replaster in some places, I think. Am I missing anything, Mark?
Um, nothing other than the fact that we may have to come to y'all to get authorization and spend some more money.
Some more money.
That was next.
Let's make sure and throw that in there.
The 6.5 million you're going to get, kidding me? It's COVID-related.
We will certainly expend the FEMA funds and then some, so at some point or another, I mean, some of this repair is FEMA-related, damages that we had after Hurricane Florence that we have now gotten authorization to do, and some of those things, but it, with what we're finding, there's some other things that we're probably going to have to come to board to get some extensions on some money, because I know Matt probably won't have enough in his funds to cover all of it. So just want to bring, make sure that the board is aware of that.
Any update on the elevator?
Matt, architects, I know they came over, they were, they did some, they did do some building measurements and some additional work, so I know they have started on the design plans, I don't know if you got anything further, Matt?
Yeah, the architect, I spoke to him earlier in the week, they have redone, redone the layout and the scope, and they're, will be going to HPC. I believe it's the second Monday or second Wednesday of the month, second Wednesday of this month, so they're moving forward the HPC process this month.
Right, great. Anything further at this time? Do we need a closed session tonight?
No, sir.
Be kind of tough to do one, but anything further to come for the New Bern Board of